Let's go ahead and call this work session to order.
Yes, yes, yes.
If nobody has an objection for this work session for me to conduct the meeting, for the regular session, we do need a present of approval tab. If you're good with that, we'll just call roll call and I'll take the agenda items as we get out and through it then. Anybody have any concerns on that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Stanford?
Here.
Mr. Bruder?
Here.
Mrs. Hodges?
Here.
Mrs. Prusman?
Here.
Okay. Motion to approve the work session agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You had a motion and second?
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Okay. I have 3.1. I want a brief overview here of the APR that was just recently released. I do want to let everyone know November 9 will be the full report because that's a quarterly updated report on the academic performance. So I'll turn this over to Kendra right now.
Okay. Like Dr. Newhart said, this is just going to be a brief overview. I don't know if the audience can see this or not. I'm going to turn the light off. And so what this is, just from a 30,000-foot view, is our annual performance report. And this is broken out by five different standards that you can see there, which is academic achievement, subgroup achievement, college and career readiness, attendance, and graduation rate. This year, they disapproved out of 140 points, got 124.5 points. That gives us a percentage of 88.9 percent. In academic achievement, the categories in academic achievement are English Language, Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. We received 51 out of the possible 56 points for a percent of 91.1 percent. Subgroup achievement, those are students that are either in breed, reduced lunch, any ethnicity, racial categorizations, and students that have an IEP. In that particular category, out of the 14 points, we received nine and a half points for a percentage of 67.9 percent. And for college and career readiness, that's broken out into three categories. It has to do with our testing, dual credit, advanced placement ID, and in addition, what's called post-secondary placement, what our students do after they leave us. In that particular category, out of the 30 points, we received 26 points for 86.7 percent. And in attendance this year, out of the 10 possible points, we got eight points for 80 percent in that particular category. And in graduation rate, we received 30 of the 30 possible points for 100 percent. This year, for the first time, we, all of our juniors took the statewide ACT. And for our participation rate, and that's all the juniors in the school district, we had a 94.6 percent participation rate. And the average composite score there was an 18.5 for our juniors, not our seniors. It's usually our seniors that we look at there. Is there any questions so far? Just want to stop and give somebody? Yes?
I've got one. Can we, anyway, we can see the comparatives for 14 for all of the breakout categories, 13 and 14?
Yes.
We see it in total, and we see it in some components, but we don't see it by every subgroup or every standard, 13, 14, 15.
Yes. So today, we were going to just go over this briefly, but I did prepare that in case that was asked. And like Dr. Newhart said, we will be going over this in great depth on the ninth.
I have a question too, Kendra, about the juniors' ACT. Do you know what the state average is or other school districts are size?
There was, we don't know like a state average, but other school districts are size. I think for our comparison set, which we have 10 that we choose as a comparison set, we were about, we were-
What did they-
About eight, if that makes any sense. So out of 10, we were about eight.
This is good information because it shows you we've made significant improvements in four out of five categories. But our subgroup two, we have had a continuous slide for three years in a row. Otherwise, the numbers would have been even better in total.
Yeah.
I think we should focus some efforts on subgroup number two.
Yeah.
As well as college career readiness, one through three.
Subgroup two, that's the math you're talking about, Eric?
No, I'm talking about on the front, the subgroup two where we got nine and a half points out of 14. If you look at that, we went, we went 13 and 13 points out of 14 in 2013. 14, we dropped to 10. 15, we dropped to nine and a half. So we've fallen off the cliff in that category. Every other category seemed improvement.
Oh, how do we get the academic achievement? When we score below the state average in all those subject areas, how is it that we score so well?
Student growth.
Okay. When we go-
They might not be scoring proficient, but if they make significant enough growth, you're-
Because it's a three, it's looking back at the three years, is that?
And they took in that component this year as well.
The big hits in that number two are math and science, by the way, because you've got the details broken out. Math and science will fall off the cliff in group number two in three years.
And so we've already began the process of looking at those subgroups and looking at the gaps. I mean, at least from a number standpoint. So we'll be able to present that to you as well on the ninth, so that you can kind of see that. And to your-
Go ahead.
Well, to your question about, you know, how do we get those points? We'll be going over that supporting data document. I don't know if you remember that from years past, but it's the one that kind of talks about this status, then the progress, then the growth. So you have three different ways for which to look at your, kind of your overall health.
Right.
So you wouldn't necessarily just be looking at just the achievement. You'd be looking at, okay, did we make progress?
Right.
And then, did we make growth? And that would be a per kid measurement, so.
If we fix that one category, even just back to 13, forget about perfect, it puts us up as a total education system to 90, almost 92 percent.
This is, I'm sorry, remind me, we're testing secondary for this or is this all of the?
This would be, this would be grades three through eight for the ELA and the math. And then in addition-
Math test.
Right, the math test. And then in addition, the EOCs that are tested.
And also for everyone who might be watching. Thank you. The graduation rate is, I mean, the gradu-, okay, yeah, graduation rate, we have 30 out of 30. I mean, we got 100 percent. Does, what, what does that mean? That doesn't mean 100 percent of our students are graduating.
No, that means of the possible points for the, for the framework that Desi sets up, we got 30 out of the 30 possible points. So it means our graduation rate is, and I can tell you what it is, that it's right around 92 percent.
Which is their, I think, I think this, the way that the state has this is misleading because that's, you know, that's not on us. That's just, it's, if you got 100 percent in graduation rate, it implies that your graduation, everyone's graduating.
No, yeah, it, it means that, that's the point, that's the number of points that you got out of 30. But no, definitely. No, our graduation rate this year, our four-year rate was 92.7 percent, so.
They do that on a true work basis now when you're incoming. There's actually a four, and five, and a six-year cohort.
And now a seven.
And it's a seven year, which is-
So.
You get the best one out of-
Well, that's the four year, but you still get points for the other.
Right.
So your incoming freshmen, that are, they graduate in four years.
Right. Or they're in the cohort of the five year. So I think, I think when we go over the supporting data, you'll have a lot more, definitely a lot more information. I think it was just to be kind of preliminarily, let you know kind of where we are and certainly field any questions and better prepare for, you know, what kind of questions you might have on the ninth as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They've been working with raw data since August, basically. But it really wasn't until last Monday that the finality of this started coming to us. And then the release was on Friday. So they're still trying to work through some things with it, but we'll have that forward report on the ninth.
Excellent.
We did have a meet confer, meeting again last week. And we do have representatives from the negotiating group here as well as C-Biz. And Lori and Eric were on that meet confer team on the district's behalf. So if this picks up time, I'll turn it over to Amy.
So we did go through a process, as everyone knows, in meeting with committees and then the meet and confer sessions. And what we ended up with at the end is taking a mixture of two of the plan options that we had. So Plan Option One was the plans as they are today. But what we did was take the HSA piece and add it in as an option as well. So it's Plan One plus an HSA is what we're going to do.
And that doesn't affect the grandfather?
It does not.
Because the original plan remained the same?
Correct.
Didn't change anything?
Correct. So what I'm going to ask Jim to do is just kind of go through the plan-
Sure.
And the HSA a little bit, just to educate everybody on what we're, what the plans would look like and what we're proposing.
Good, good, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to be here. Yes, it was, the meet and confer meetings, I thought was well done and it was, I think it was very good dialogue back and forth. So as Amy said, basically, your plans, which hold the majority of your members in right now, your HMO and your PPO plans are not changing. There's no change in the grandfather, plan designs, et cetera. All we're going to be doing is adding a high deductible healthcare plan with an HSA. It's pretty simple as that. So again, no change in plan design. Do you all have this?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to go through the benefits at all or just go through the-
Can you quickly?
Sure, absolutely.
Just kind of quickly?
We're trying to get it thrown up here too on the screen.
Okay.
Because people watch, they watch from at home.
Sounds good.
They don't have the piece of paper.
Okay. On the first column, on the left-hand column, it's, we just put together some of the things that people are interested in, like deductibles, co-insurance, things like that, their preventive care, how's it covered, and things like that. So the first column is your HMO, and this says draft across it, but you've got 80, almost 81 and a half percent of your population in the HMO plan. And basically what it is, there's, there's no deductible in the HMO, and it's 100 percent coverage in the, in the co-insurance. Now, the, the only thing that happens, if you go into the, the hospital, it's a $400 copay, and then basically your out-of-pocket maximum is like $1,200. The preventive care is covered at 100 percent. Office visits for your primary care, which is PCP, is $25, and specialist is 50. And then it goes through these other copays you can see. So if a person goes in and has $100,000 on a claim in the hospital, it's $400, you know, for, up to, up to $1,200, which is a very, very good split. You've got prescription drugs covered, $8 for generic, $25 for preferred brand, and the non-preferred is 45. You can get mail-order drugs, two times that. And as I can, I know nothing's been voted on, but I know the, the potential discussion or agreement or whatever was the, the district to pay, Board of Education to pay the higher amount, the increase of the 8.6. So by doing that, that's, that's one of the, that's the main reason why we kept the grandfather. So you're able to pay what you were paying percentage-wise, what you're paying with the increase.
Right. The district pays 8 percent more than they did last year, and the people each pay 8 percent more on their portion that they paid, right?
Right. So, so again, the majority of your people are in the HMO. The next plan is your PPO, and it has about 18, 18 and a half percent. And what's nice, with the HMO, you know, you have a primary care physician, and you can refer and self-refer inside the network. What's nice about PPO, people, some people like to be able to go wherever they want to go, when they want to go. And so under a PPO plan, which is a preferred provider organization plan, you have in-network and out-of-network benefits. So if I wanted to go to Mayo Clinic and not have to be referred, I could go. And Blue Cross has this national blue card network, so if somebody, if your retirees are living outside the area, or if you decide you wanted to go to a, the Mayo Clinic or MD Anderson, you can do that. And if it's in-network, it's covered as, as you would be here in St. Joseph or Kansas City. If it's outside the network, then it'll be on the out-of-network side, and you're going to pay the higher cost. But the plan design isn't changed. It's a $1,000 deductible, 2,000 for family. If you go into the hospital or if you have a claim that is not a office visit claim, you're going to pay 20 percent. The insurance company, Blue Cross, is going to pay 80, and the out-of-pocket maximum is $2,500. So if you had a $100,000 on a claim, your out-of-pocket maximum is $2,500. Okay? Preventive care is covered at 100 percent. The office visit copay is 25, so you go to the doctor's, $25 copay. And that also is for a specialist too, which is nice. It's a very nice perk. Same prescription drug, oh, if you go in the hospital, again, you have your deductible, and then Blue Cross pays 80 percent, and then you pay 20 percent to that out-of-pocket max. The prescription drugs are the same. And again, that, these, these two plans here are on a blended basis on rates. So there's not, there's not a difference in the rate structure, so keeps your grandfather with, if you do come to that agreement. The, the plan that will be added, which I think, you know, we're, we're, we've already started, if it gets through, we've got dates set up. We're going to be doing meetings. We're going to have meetings about the high deductible healthcare plan and the HSA. Dr. Newhart had a great, had a great point after our meeting at the meet confer. Kristen Grace and I are going to come back in December. You tell us what meeting you want us to, and we could do a, let's just say, an HSA 101 for the Board of Education. And probably a 20, 30-minute slideshow, but I think it'll bring everybody up to date. It'll be on the TV, you can put on your internet. And, but we're going to really work hard with Amy and her staff to do a, not only communicate what you have, but, but the high deductible. That's very important because it's, it's going to be, this first year is going to be really a nice perk for you. Let's go through that. It's a, it's a $2,600 deductible for an individual or 5,200 for family, okay? But if you, if you do not, if all you have is wellness visits, the plan pays 100 percent of everything, okay? So if you just have wellness visits for yourself, your children, your spouse, 100 percent covered. What comes into play is when you have any type of an illness, prescription drugs, MRI, hospital stay, your, your, your plan, before anything is covered, for an individual, you're going to pay $2,600. And that's the new regs for the, it was 2,500, and then it's, it's now 2,600 to be, which we talked about was an embedded deductible, which is good. So after you, if you go into the hospital, have a $100,000 claim, as we mentioned before, your out-of-pocket maximum is $2,600, and that's, and you don't pay anything the rest of, the rest of the year. No prescription drug costs, nothing. It's, it's really a nice plan. You can see your deductible is your out-of-pocket. If you stay in-network, which is the Blue Cross network, not only locally but nationwide, you're utilizing the in-network provision, it's 100 percent after your deductible. If you're outside the network, your, your out-of-pocket is higher, you have an 80-20 So it's, it's not only a great plan, you're going to have two types of people, I think, in, in the high deductible. You have people who, who say, okay, I want to pay as less as I can in premium and more if I have claims, okay? And you're going to have the other buyer of insurance is saying, okay, I know I'm going to have claims, and all I got to pay out of my pocket is $2,600, and it's 100 percent.
Well, actually, that's because the district's going to contribute 85 bucks a month into their account on their, on their behalf.
Yes, which I was going to do.
About half of that.
Because the HSA premium is less, the district can take that money and put it into there.
Correct. You stole my thunder.
I'm sorry?
No, 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 you're good, you're good, that's good. Which, which is, Mr. Bruder brought up, is that the district is going to be putting in 85, 61 into the HSA per month. So that's, that's, that's huge. That's a huge perk for the employee. Like I said, you're going to have two different types of employees that are going to want to get in this. Want you, you know, wants to get in an HSA and, and have that money, you know, roll over each year. And you're going to have people that are ill that'll say, hey, you know what? This is a pretty good plan. So.
Actually, it becomes about 1,500, 1,600 out-of-pocket.
Correct.
No difference.
Well, if you look at how much they don't have to pay, if you add that in also. Correct. So you're going to be putting almost $1,500 in. If you take that, what you would normally pay for your premium and stick that in your HSA also, you're only going to have to come up with about $1,100 for that claim.
And if you don't use it, it rolls the whole year, so it continues to build.
And you can put in 33, 50, a total. Unless your family. The family's 16, 60, 50, yeah, 50, yeah.
But you have to manage it.
You've got to manage it. Correct. Yeah, you don't want to put it in mutual funds, probably. You know, you want to keep it in something very stable, so.
The actual agreement, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 with the meet confer group. Basically, this is, just reading what, the same email that I took, for your knowledge. The insurance plan remain the same for calendar year 16 to the next renewal period of January 1, which is basically Option 1. An HSA plan will be offered, Option 5. A cap will be placed on the insurance premium amount paid by the district not to exceed 69280 for the next 30 months, beginning January 1, 16 through July 1, 18. Basically, for the final six months of this fiscal year, fiscal year 17, and fiscal year 18. This means the premium amount paid by the district could be less, but will not exceed 69280. Education on the HSA, self-funding, other insurance options will be researched for the January 1 renewal. RFP for brokers, other insurance will be researched. Family plan remains the same for 16, and district contribution's the same. Open for negotiation and discussion, though. This is one of the caveats I believe the teacher negotiating team wanted for the renewal of 17, though. And I was at that last, just leaving that open to, to discussion. But we're looking to hopefully get this signed tomorrow night, come back Thursday with a special board meeting at 4:30 to approve that agreement. And then also, as you'll see here in a little bit, to go over the comp study further, okay?
And the plan is, we are ready to roll with, with meetings because adding the additional HSA requires some education. We've got a limited amount of time for this year before we have to, to get through the open enrollment process. So we're not only planning on having these meetings now, but then as we pursue through the next year, having additional meetings, educating employees going forward on what an HSA can do, so that we can continue to look at an increase in enrollment in that plan, if it benefits the employee to choose that.
Appreciate it, Jim.
You bet.
Good. E-finance review and time clock plus. Back in August, we had requested from Sun Guard to review our e-finance program and what we were doing or not doing. They came back with a, a report to us this past week. And basically, you'll see a lot of things that were in the state audit, okay? Some of this relays into what the e-finance program is capable of doing, but we're not doing, and we need to get trained to do, okay? And we're starting an intense training program. We actually started today with part of that on a position control piece. And we, actually, and I haven't even told Wes this, but they're actually going to be coming in the week of November 9, potentially, but setting this training up where we go, we want to be full, 100 percent operational with our e-finance and training come February 1. And the training piece, though, cannot go away. You have to continue that as it upgrades or as new employees come in. You have to keep people trained.
This attachment is available for everyone to see, right?
Yes.
Because I thought it was wonderful. It, it was really well done. It was like 12 pages long where the, the company that comes in finds out, how have we been doing it? They, of course, know their software very well, and they're saying, jeez, you should, you should be doing this, you know? And the people sitting there are like, huh, yeah, we should. We do that. And so they go through all these different things. I would encourage people to take a look at how it's been done before and how it's going to be so much better by implementing this training. And, and I guess, you know, you don't necessarily know how, how these kinds of things were working. And it's really helpful to me as a, as a board member or just an interested party to see what all had been going on there. Because, you know, it's not like we can walk in there and find out. So this was very, very helpful, I thought, and I really think this is the way to go, to get that all running most smoothly. I don't know what you guys thought when you looked through it, but I really liked it.
I liked the way it was all broken down.
They seemed very thorough.
Discovery, recommendations, and stuff.
Time Clock Plus, Wes, I'll turn it over to you on that one.
We're going to start implementing this pretty quickly. We're going to start on the 8th, bring on central office first, try to get this all done and everybody on board by March 1st. Leah, she's just, she's told me that, she volunteered the food service to go on second, so we'll start with that. We're going to start doing training. I got meetings with Tam to get all the time clocks put on the computers or at least make it accessible in every building, so people have a place to log in and out.
When's the warehouse coming on?
That's a small group. We'll have to, they're, they're part of Magnets, so probably last. They're the biggest group, so we want to try to get as many people on.
Is it just the hourly employees that will be using the time clock?
Anybody that, that is, that is getting paid on an hourly rate will use it. So everybody in the district will be in the time clock. Because there's teachers and stuff that do stuff on an hourly rate.
Right.
Summer school is a really good example, because they get paid on an hourly rate. Even though it's calculated as a stipend, it's actually figured on an hourly, hourly rate. So in the summertime, they'll clock in and clock out, just like everybody else.
So you like swipe your card through something?
Yeah, there's, everybody will have a code, a six-digit code.
Go online.
You do it on any computer. It'll be, actually, I think it's going to be right on the webpage where people can go into it and log into it.
Through the log?
Through employee access. You can do it from home. It'll tell us you done it from home.
It's like, how do you know? What if somebody else puts in your code?
The, the system that Time Clock Plus, it actually, it puts a pin on a map. Tells us exactly where you clocked in from GPS.
Interesting.
So if we have, if we think somebody's working around the system, they're not supposed to be clocking in and out from home, we'll know it. We can go in and check the records for the whole year and see where they've been clocking in and out from.
We're trying to get through the kinks. In fact, we're checking with some of the schools that have it. One school out of Pennsylvania went online here just recently, and we're trying to avoid some of those same-
Pitfalls.
Pitfalls.
Yeah. They, they brought up a point saying, you know, if I'd have known this before we started, we could have done it this way, so I'm going to try to get with them.
That's great.
And let's get through it, yes.
Proactive.
Great. Any questions?
Thank you, Wes. Reporters checklist number 15, cost-saving measures. The focus here tonight is on the Colgan Center. I do have Sandy and Brian here to present here. They've been working on this, and I'll turn it over to them.
Okay. So I think you guys have the documents in touch this afternoon. So basically, our recommendation would be moving all programming at the Colgan Alternative Resource Center to Webster Learning Center. And therefore, Webster would house all AEL Missouri options, Learning Academy, Building Bridges, Management School in the community. Basically, like an alternative school resource location. So we have included the current building costs for Colgan, broken down by, we listed the programs there, so you knew what programs are there. the programs there, so you knew what programs are there. The cost for Colgan, cost for Webster, and then some just total projected savings by not utilizing that facility.
That does not include the sale of property for everything?
Does not include, no.
That property belongs to the school district? Because I've heard, I've heard that it was leased, or...
Yeah, we were told today that it is, that's belonging.
Okay. Because I wasn't really sure.
The analysis that's been done on this, this is very good, by the way, the analysis that's been done on this has taken into the account the requirements for Colgan Center personnel as far as piece rooms and those extra...
Yes. The implications, I've included that. I put down at the very bottom, Webster would need a few modifications in order to accommodate the program requirements for Building Bridges in the Community Program. That's taking into account these. Really, we talked about staffing, and really, the staff would go over. We wouldn't really reduce. There might be some options with the Learning Academy and Missouri Options Program, maybe a position or two there that we could combine and share resources. But really, your big cost is going to be in your maintenance savings, may or not be administrative or secretarial.
One of the caveats with this is the YMCA daycare program at Oak Grove.
I see that on there.
That's where we would plan to move the preschool rooms, they're currently at Webster, to. As you'll see in new business, we have that YMCA agreement to discuss. And there's potentially maybe other options to move the preschool programs to. This is probably the best option from a location standpoint, facility standpoint, in our opinion. But that is a seven-year agreement that is entered into with YMCA by the current administration at the time. We're still checking out all ramifications in regards to that. We, you know, YMCA has a new CEO coming on board, and they really wanted us to wait until that person gets here, but Solon, I don't know if you've got any more to add to that?
Brian and I have a meeting tomorrow at ten-thirty with our interim director, Suzanne King, to kind of just tell them what we're thinking, and so they're not blindsided by anything, and kind of get their input also.
Timing would be sixteen, seventeen school year?
Yes, start at the...
And we're assuming in this analysis, the same headcount you've got today with ninety-eight students?
Yes.
So, I noticed that you had, like, the electricity costs and stuff. Would that cost go up when they all move to Webster? Now, we're going to have more lights on and more of the building?
Just gave it to me.
Yes. I would say it would be gradual, yes. It would be a gradual increase in that, but...
There'd be some minor upgrades to Webster, which we talked briefly about that today, but...
Yes, like an art room, we'd need to put a sink in one of the rooms to utilize as an art room. A couple of the rooms that we would need to use as piece rooms, we might need to do something to make them a safe space for students who have to access that space. So, there'll be a few, but I think the upgrades don't even come near as close as the savings that we'll get from it.
But you can see the other implications here. The other community agencies are at Colgan currently. The gifted program would need to be relocated, the junior OTC storage, office space for curriculum coordinators, and a few modifications at Webster.
TMC has some open classrooms and stuff, and those would be...
Because that's where all of our servers and stuff are. We don't want to get rid of that one.
I think the other implications that you worked down, you have the plan for the gifted program, junior OTC we can figure out, meet with major boards and figure out a space for their staff. The rest of it, we can do, really, the one we have to get to sign on is the YMCA. Right, it's what I was...
And to be clear, we have not done anything with any implications. Like I said, we have some meetings scheduled, but until you all make some decisions, we don't want to invest a lot of time or get any people concerned unless you all have interest in this in any way, but we have not invested any time in these implications.
I would like to get this before the board, obviously, tonight, as a first step. I do not have it on the agenda later for new business, but I would place it on new business for November. The earliest that any type of decision would be December. So, I guess at December, or excuse me, November sixteenth meeting, we have a special board meeting on HVAC, and it could be potentially added. But that would be the timeline for this particular building decision.
Just one comment, I wouldn't want to go beyond that.
No.
We need to move on these things, and the board can collectively decide what they want to do with it. It's my opinion, we need to move forward.
Well, one issue we're struggling with there, Eric, is that if you take this space from the Y, use it for preschool space, depending on what you do with noise, okay? Looking at any other type of closures, facilities, of elementaries, if that is any options, that takes away that potential of K five-six space at Oak Grove, which is currently not being used now for that, though, either.
I think until we see all of it in black and white on a piece of paper with classroom counts, head counts, and scenarios, I mean...
I'm trying to take this one step at a time. Yeah, what is the, what happens to this domino effect? The head counts, if we do this with Colgan, okay? Then that space at Oak Grove goes away, which, you know, we could move the Y and use it for elementary space, is what I'm saying, instead of preschool space.
Also, I mean, the, I don't know how you want to say it, the chicken behind the door, or however you want to say it.
Opening the room?
That's another way to say it. But there is a hundred transfer, teacher transfer visit at Oak Grove, too. So, that needs to be discussed also. We've got kids coming in out of district that are being moved in there. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. At least need to discuss it.
So, just so I understand, the Y preschool that's at Oak Grove?
Daycare.
It's daycare. They have a certain number of classrooms that they're using for that?
Basically, like...
They have a whole wing.
I'd sort of heard that it was like a wing, but I wasn't sure what that looked like.
Only a fraction of that's being utilized, correct? Even though they have leased? So, we're leasing space that's not being utilized?
Well, we're not getting any return on dollars from this. It's free to the Y.
Oh, so there's no money coming in for this?
That must be throw up anymore.
So, they have, like, how many classrooms in? They have five, and they're not needing to use all of them at this point?
I can't answer that.
Oh, you're not sure how many they're using?
I can tell you that the number of kids there would more than use in five rooms, but I can't tell you how the Y is using their space, so I don't want to speak.
That makes sense, sure. I just guessed that they would be, like, normal, but you're right.
We'll talk more on that agreement in new business.
Okay, that's right.
Okay. You have any questions on this?
Thank you.
All right.
Handbook update.
I just want to do a brief update to the handbook.
We'll pass this out. This is just a piece of the structure that we'll be using for the handbook. The handbook is not ready for your review tonight, but will be at the November Board of Education. But what we've done is kind of take a look at what we have today, today, and try to build a structure for our handbook as we're looking at the different sections. There's also another piece that we're doing, and we're trying to look at some of the different policies. One of the policies we'll be talking about tonight has to do with comp time, and so we'll have some further discussion about that. So, we're trying to update as many policies as we can. It may not be a hundred percent what we want to do going forward, but we can start looking at some of those policies going into the next school year. So, I just wanted to provide an update from the table of contents that you have here. This is what the structure and the information. Now, some of this information overlaps with board policies. So, what the plan is to do, right now, our handbook has board policies just restated. And so, if you change a board policy, we have to go in and change the employee handbook. So, instead of doing that, we are adding links to our handbook that will just take you directly out to the board policy. So, when you change a board policy, that link is right there.
Keeps the handbook up to date?
Right. So, we don't have to continue to do that. So, it will cut down the size of our handbook. Just by doing that, it cut it down probably fifty pages of our handbook, just by adding links. Now, there are a few things that I feel like we're missing that we are going to add back into the handbook, but it won't be another fifty pages. So, I just wanted you to see what the structure is and let you know that you will be seeing this coming forward in November for a final review.
Great. Excellent question. Very thorough.
Yes.
I know this took a lot of work. Thank you.
It is, and there's still a lot of work to be done on it as we review really how we want to do things going forward, but it'll be a continual process, and it's something that has to be reviewed annually, anyway.
So, would we, like, encourage staff if they ran across something that isn't in here that they'd like to see to know?
Right. It's something that we would review, yeah, and determine whether it's something, not everything goes in an employee handbook, but it may be that it's something that would be good to have out there as a resource for an employee to look at. Even if it doesn't go in the handbook, we can find a place for it. Right? Okay.
Thank you.
CSIP lead team and the process format. Basically, coming out of the town hall meetings and moving forward and trying to stay with the timeline that the Board of Education approved on the aggressive CSIP plan, we laid out basically a flow chart here for you that we do want to make sure everybody understands that you're trying to develop a district and community school improvement plan. This will flow down to individual, the high schools, the middle schools, and the elementaries, where at each level, there'd be an improvement plan and then a building improvement plan. And I'd like to have Brian and Sandy talk briefly about those building improvement plans before I get into the lead team documents.
I guess, just want to make sure that you all understand that the way that this flows is we have the comprehensive school improvement plan that you all have seen, but every single school has their own school improvement plan. And basically, those school improvement plans are the action steps for, because that's where the actions take in place. So, those action steps then relate back to how are you addressing those goals and strategies? Here are the actions. And so, they write their plans according to our goals and strategies and list all the actions they'll take to attack those strategies and goals. Does that make sense?
So, it's basically an individual building plan. And I think what we're going to try to work for, though, is where there's an umbrella elementary plan, okay? Then that will branch to the building plans. It might be a little bit different what we currently have.
Yeah. So, be clear. So, the elementary schools, the six-year-old elementary schools, not all of their school plans look exactly the same. If you were to look at them, they look much, they look different because they're different schools, they're different cultures, they're different families, different kids, different needs. So, the plans look different, but what they address in there is their version of how they're going to address the strategies and the goals. So, what a reading program might look like in one school might look different to another, but they're both addressing reading in some form to the overall.
How do we incorporate, and since you guys are experts on this, the only reason I ask is I've been in a lot of elementary schools in the last two months, and there are great things going on there, fantastic for what it's worth. Principals are great, teachers are great, but in every case, it's almost like their own autonomous organization. So, they do some things that may link them to the other elementary schools, but there's a lot of great things going on, and I'm looking at that going, man, that should be done at every elementary school.
I thought that, too.
And where's our ability to get our arms around as a board, as an administration, to do best of breed and say, okay, this is working fantastic in whatever, hide or escape or whatever, and we need to implement that across the board?
I think that's that piece from the elementary best practices that is missing right now, Eric, that you get all these elementary building teams together, principals, and they need to have that discussion to see what best practices can work across the board.
Well, we ought to tour the other elementary schools and look at them and see it in action, because some of it's very impressive, and in many cases, you only see it in one school. And then this, you only see in this school. It's fantastic stuff, but they ought to best of breed apply it across. I took a bunch of pictures of you going to see them, by the way. I mean, the stuff in action that they're using, it's very impressive.
That needs to be done the same way again for middle schools, same way for high schools. There's got to be a consistency established that, it's not that they can't vary to their individual, you know, need, but there has to be a base consistency established.
I like the idea that something that's going really well at one school could get used somewhere where maybe you're still struggling to find that really good thing.
We're taking our town hall meetings to staff as well, beginning Wednesday, Wednesday, Monday, and Tuesday. Beginning Wednesday, it's at Lafayette. Then next Monday's at Central, and following Tuesdays at St. Joe Bennett. And it's, again, open to staff, same format. We'll continue having town hall meetings as well into November and December for community at various locations. Through this, we're trying to develop this lead team format. And if you look at the lead team, this is just from signups, I've not necessarily gone out and solicited anybody. Currently, right now, we do not have any board members on this. I believe that we need to, my opinion, that you need to help me here, to stay a step removed until it does come to you for board approval. But what we'd like to try to do is out of these lead members, actually sit down with them in the goal areas and develop this for...
So, these are people that signed up at both the meeting?
Uh-huh. Or sent in.
Yeah. We also opened up just town, too.
Great.
I've got a problem with one of these people on here.
And we can talk about...
Number fourteen, Todd Brockett, I don't know about him. I'm sorry, I couldn't...
That's all right.
I'm just kidding, by the way.
He's teasing people at home.
And I don't, you know, I don't want to get confused anything here with, I think a lot of the information that was used in the pack plan needs to be delved into deeper, okay? And see what will work, particularly in a facility, facility planning as we move forward.
Any questions, comments, Eric?
I think it's encouraging that you've got this many people that want to jump out of the middle of it from the public. I think it's fantastic.
I totally agree. I'm surprised, that's...
I'd like to encourage them to keep coming to these meetings if they haven't been yet, and they want to, you know, have something, some say in what's going on.
We are compiling all the comments, all this, and we'll have a complete list, we just, it's a time element in a lot of ways, but basically, it's like a qualitative study to see what themes are emerging from these comments. And there will be themes, and we'll have that breakout for you here at the upcoming meeting.
At the November meeting?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah, if we get all this done from staff, and Joey's the one kind of doing all the capitulation right now, so then we'll try to, you know, group it if there's themes that would emerge from a qualitative study.
So, the ones that are at the high school, you're not planning on going to each of the school, you're hoping that those...
We're inviting everybody that can attend, all three of them or one of them, but we did it north end, middle, and south end, and elementary, middle school, but they're all invited, like to go to Lafayette Auditorium.
I just didn't know if you were doing any more school ones, so that, you answered that question.
Yeah, from a time element, the Y is...
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Compensation study. Amy? That's your computer, was it copied of the twenty-two pages? This will be uploaded, could be uploaded as I speak here.
In its entirety, the twenty-two pages?
Yes.
I'll check it.
It's uploaded, it's on there.
Uploaded for the district website.
We can, we can change that, it's not as of yet, no. Yeah. She's doing that right now.
Okay, so you have two pieces of information. Number one, we have Priya here from Cbis. Priya's husband, our contact with Cbis with regard to the comp study has been the project lead for us as we go through. So you have two pieces of information. One is the presentation, comp study presentation, and then you have exhibits that go along with that. A couple of things I'll mention just as an introduction, as you know, after we signed a contract with Cbis, there were several pieces of things that occurred at that point. One was, we had some planning meetings where we laid out plans on how we would communicate this information, how would we gather information from our employees. They were asked to fill out job analysis questionnaires. Then we also had focus groups that met with regard to this. Job description development, I did receive the job descriptions on Friday, so we're doing an initial review, and then I will be sending that out to the individuals, principals, supervisors, those types of individuals, to review those job descriptions to make sure it's an accurate reflection as that. And as I mentioned, I just received those on Friday, so those have not gone out yet. Compensation analysis, which is what Priya will go over today as well. So as we go through this, one thing I might mention is that these are some preliminary information. There are decision points that need to be made with regard to the comp study, how it will look going forward, what the final result is going to look like. So as we look through this, this is some preliminary information, there are decision points, Priya will kind of point those out on where, where we need some additional guidance, answers, and how that's going to look going forward. So with that, Priya, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Great. I'll jump right into the presentation, and really, the goal of this is to give an overview of where we're at, what we're seeing on a preliminary basis, and how to show results of the compensation study. And as Amy said, talk about some of those broad recommendations, but more importantly, next steps in terms of where we go from here to finalize the results of the compensation study and develop an implementation plan that works effectively for the district. In terms of what we've been asked to do and what these preliminary recommendations represent, are working first and foremost at job classifications and drafting new job descriptions, comparing compensation to the competitive market, and kind of equity assessments, which I'll speak to, which fall into those next steps, and also reviewing and making recommendations related to existing compensation administration policies and procedures. In terms of the methodology for the project, start to finish, these six steps really define the major components of the project in terms of initial pick-ups, having those appropriate planning meetings, moving into job evaluation, and then the more specific analyses. Speak to each of those in the next few slides. So starting with job evaluation, as Amy said, all employees were given an opportunity earlier this year on late summer, early fall, to create a job analysis questionnaire, what we call for short, JQ, which really focused on what they do on a day-to-day basis. The goal of that was to understand beyond simply a job title, what an employee is actually doing. Based on that, we were able to identify appropriate market matches for jobs and also recommend more specific job classifications. As part of that, we did recommend job separation as well as consolidation in terms of titles, where we did identify employees that in some instances have the same title but were in fact doing different jobs, we may have recommended separation. For other positions that appeared to be doing largely the same function, very similar job tasks, that had different titles, we may have recommended consolidation of that title. In addition, titles were revised as needed to better reflect their actual job roles, create consistency for the district, and also better identify with what market matches and what other districts are using for those types of goals from a title standpoint. Finally, the goal of that, too, is to clarify hierarchy across the organization, particularly at lower levels in terms of where one might move up for their given department or job function, and along with that, clarify career paths. Moving then from classification, compensation, as we look externally at appropriate markets, typically, there are three primary components that build into or focus on what those markets are and how they should be defined. Those are geographic location, industry, and organization size. And really, the underlying goal for each of these components is that the hypothetical or in some cases very real recruitment pool and area is reflected in the data we collect. For geographic location, in many instances, we were looking at St. Joe's and the surrounding area, or the school districts, quite specific, you'll see that on the next slide. For some of the broader organizational data used, we were looking at the Kansas City to Omaha corridor in large part. Regional and national data was used to a much lesser extent, but for some higher-level roles that may be recruited at a much broader level, that was the focus. For industry, obviously, many of the jobs are education or school district specific. Some of those cases, we were looking at a specified peer group. One of the discussion points we've had is the use of broader data as well. At this time, for those jobs like human resources, or finance, and IT, that do exist across many different diverse industries, we are incorporating local and regional market data that represents organizations other than school districts. It would be a discussion point as to whether we continue down that methodology, or if there is a desire to focus exclusively on those comparable school districts. Organization size, that final element under consideration for defining the market. Typically, this has the greatest correlation or relevance for senior management positions, administration positions, where we do see correlation between the size of the district and compensation for those jobs. In terms of the specific peers or peer districts utilized, as are shown here, just to note on the asterisk, those organizations or districts that we received specific employee data from have the asterisks. It's not that the other two are excluded, but we did rely on the information that's readily available, namely salary schedules and the like, as opposed to that underlying employee data that we received from the others. In terms of the market benchmark, or market target used for the district, we are looking at the market fiftieth percentile, or the point at which have a compensation to pay more and not pay less. This is by far the most common target for school districts, just given the fact that it is right in the middle of the market, and we communicated externally that the compensation target is financially prudent. Likewise, internally, we communicated the pay is fair and competitive by looking at that market median. Just to continue with definitions, we did, as part of the compensation study, look at base salary, that's really the focus of what you'll see in this. In addition, we did evaluate those primary benefits offerings, and the way in which will ultimately define total compensation and the competitive placement of the district from a total compensation standpoint, is base salary and benefits. In addition, we are looking at extra duty pay, that typically, we look to somewhat set aside from that total compensation value, just for better apples-to-apples comparison. Continuing with definitions, as I mentioned, fiftieth percentile is really our focus in terms of the market target. We did, however, report twenty-fifth and seventy-fifth percentile as well. That helps us define the competitive range by looking at that range from the twenty-fifth to the seventy-fifth percentile. We're looking at the middle fifty percent of the market, so again, dropping that bottom percentile, dropping the top, we're really focusing in on the most competitive values available for each given job. And finally, comp ratio, I'll reference only briefly in this presentation, but it is a calculation we use quite frequently to give a quick explanation or illustration of how the district compares to the market. It's simply actual pay or actual average pay, in this case, divided by the midpoint of the salary range proposed for a job. New salary schedules are being recommended as part of the compensation study. One goal is to consolidate and create some consistency across the variety of schedules and ranges currently in place. We are also focusing our schedules, or the proposed schedules, on six functional areas. Obviously, building ranges within each of those schedules, but for the purpose of better defining external value as well as internal equity, we are focusing on a functional or job family standpoint for the salary schedule development. In terms of how each job is assigned to a given salary range, again, the schedule in which they're assigned to is going to be the result of their functional area. In terms of the salary range they're assigned to, we're focusing on that market median or market fiftieth percentile, and assigning the job to the grade with a midpoint that best reflects that job-specific market median. So in this basic example here, the job-specific data yields results of thirty-five or fifty. This job would be assigned to grade two, given the alignment of the job-specific market median with the grade midpoint. This process of assigning jobs to grades or grouping jobs by grades does result, again, in that consolidation of ranges. It also better allows the district to define equity going forward in terms of identifying those jobs that are seen as comparable and putting them within the same salary range. For benefits cost analysis, we are looking at costs provided or contributions provided by the district for each employee. We look primarily at two different metrics, so a circ six-dollar cost per employee as well as percent of payroll or percent of salary, and that really just comes from different dynamics and benefits offerings. When we think of health insurance and related medical insurance offerings, those can be provided based on individual election as opposed to a given employee's job or salary within the district, so six-dollar cost is used for those, focusing on an average cost per employee. For other benefits, namely paid leave and retirement, we are looking at a percent of salary, given that those contributions are tied to what an employee is paying. Just to wrap up methodology, the last component we'll be reviewing are the existing compensation and administration procedures, providing recommendations on those as it relates to components like setting new hire pay, handling promotions and demotions and the like over time. Speaking, as I did to equity earlier, and assigning jobs going forward to the extent a new job is developed or a job is revised, there are policies that will be setting forth to guide that process of identifying appropriate salary ranges. And finally, for those jobs that are recommended for an open-range salary range as opposed to a step system, we will be recommending procedures to guide that process to ensure there is movement for the ranges over time. Moving to preliminary results, this first graph is what I'll characterize as a thirty-thousand-foot overview of how the district compares to the market fiftieth percentile. The pink line is the market plotted against itself, so it's essentially a straight forty-five-degree angle for the chart. Each blue dot represents a district job. For those jobs that do have multiple employees in them, it would be the average salary for a single incumbent position, it would be the actual employee's pay. And you can see there is a fair amount of variability and dispersion across the dots. What we focus on then is the blue line, which I'll call the St. Joe pay line, and where that falls relative to the market fiftieth. And you can see from the bottom of the organization to the top, it does track slightly below. Speaking to the dispersion, again, there are a variety of reasons, and employees may fall above or below that market fiftieth line. While that's the target, that's the target for a satisfactorily performing, fully competent employee. So if you have an individual very new in the role, you would traditionally expect them to be paid below the market fiftieth percentile. An employee coming in with a great deal of experience or that has a lot of tenure in the job, you would typically expect them to be paid above the fiftieth percentile. In terms of implementation, and going back to the comp ratio definition I mentioned earlier, when we look at all employees relative to the market fiftieth percentile and their proposed ranges, we find that the average comp ratio is ninety-three point nine percent. That does suggest that pay on average, assuming your typical traditional employee, is about six percent or just over six percent below the market median. When we look at those employees that fall below the recommended salary range, there are nearly four hundred, this would be our first recommendation to address those that fall below this recommended salary range. Those are the employees we identify as potentially critically underpaid, given that they fall beyond or below what we would suggest as an entry-level competitive rate. That dollar cost currently on a preliminary basis is just under two million dollars or a percent of payroll. In addition, there are numerous employees that are above the recommended salary range maximums. We do suggest freezing pay for those employees that fall above the range until the ranges catch up with them over time. In addition to just addressing those below minimum costs, we are looking at, obviously, for some jobs that are in a step system, accounting for that experience that they've gained already so their time and job recognition continues, and for other positions, considering additional equity adjustments as appropriate and financially possible. On a total compensation standpoint, what we find preliminarily is that benefits fare well relative to the peer school districts, and so when we look at the below-market salaries coupled with those competitive benefits, there's still some below-market status, but there is improvement when we look at total compensation, just given the fact that the benefits fare somewhat better than salaries do as we combine data. The recommendations, at this point, the recommendations are primarily focused on those that do follow best practices in terms of going forward, reviewing and implementing the market-based proposed salary schedules, ensuring that implementation, namely those below-market adjustments as well as any additional equity and tenure-based adjustments occur consistently across the district, that the schedules are updated annually, this goes back to not only generally speaking, but also those employees that are currently above the maximum. By adjusting those schedules on an annual basis, ultimately, those above-maximum employees will fall back within range and be eligible for increases once again. And again, in terms of general best practice, we do recommend a compensation study across the organization every three to five years, including ongoing review of benefits offerings as well to ensure they are not only market-competitive, but also. as well to ensure they are not only market-competitive, but also that the offerings available are meaningful and of value to employees. In terms of key next steps, we are in the process of reviewing the preliminary compensation results with the district, identifying jobs for reevaluation where there may be some question as to the completeness or comprehensiveness of certain JQs, ensuring that we've defined the job fully and that it has been appropriately benchmarked to those market-competitive values. In addition, we'll be looking at internal equity through that process as well, given that other districts are going to have different organizational structures in some instances. We want to make sure that the final result of the compensation plan is one that truly reflects St. Joe. As we collect that feedback from the district, we will be obviously conducting those reevaluations, coming back with refined recommendations, and then moving towards that final compensation plan and corresponding implementation approach.
Can we start asking questions?
I know there'll be a lot of questions, you might want to come sit down for a while.
This is not one for you, but for Amy and Robert, I know everybody's got a bunch of questions, but since I have so many, I'm gonna start if nobody's...
You might cover some that we had.
Yeah, we might.
First and foremost, before getting into details of this, this is exactly what we thought, okay? We've got many people at the building level, teachers, I E., all the way underpaid in many cases, and we've got many people in other positions in administration overhead who are overcompensated. So it's exactly what we thought, and it's almost to the magnitude that we thought we looked at the scatter chart a week ago. My first question though is, there's many positions on here that we employ that there's no comparative data in the other districts, some of which I find odd because we have athletic directors, but there's no comparative data for athletic directors in other districts. It's a blank, so...
They have athletic directors in those other districts.
They do, and there may be some areas where either, given the current sample size we're working from, we didn't feel comfortable putting that out there and suggesting that St. Joe should look to only two other districts. That's most frequently where you might give length, where we are looking to those peers to apply some more information or provide more information.
There's quite a few of them, language, arch coordinators, ROTC, I mean, there's probably six or seven of them that are like that with no comparative data. I think that stuff just needs to get cleaned up so you can see the whole picture.
Absolutely.
And then two, I agree with your comment that we should address the inequities on the low side as soon as possible because, and that comes with next contract year, but because there's many of these people that are so far off scaling. You want to know where we got a 15% turnover rate? You're staring at it right here, and we gotta fix it. But by the same token, I would actually disagree on the high side because some of these compensation differentials, unless justified, are so far over where they should be that freezing, we'd have to freeze their pay for 20 years to get it back on scale. So something has to be discussed and addressed in those cases, whether the salary gets rolled back or the stipend that was rolled in gets pulled out, because some of these are off mark and not by level. So those are kind of my initial comments. I've got a whole bunch of detail here, so I'll table those detailed comments and give everybody else an opportunity to jump in.
I have a question. We had a committee last summer that was looking at some of some stipends and things that we had, and one of the things that, when we came down to it, we needed a study like this to look at this, it was just too much for a bunch of laypeople to manage on our own. So one of the things that was of concern to them was, when we look at how much our St. Joe employees are paid with the taxes that we take in here in our city, how does that compare to another district who may get many more taxes and can therefore afford to pay more to their people? We wanted some kind of comparison that took that into account. You know, since we make less, we, our people, might expect a certain percentage difference than there. And it doesn't seem from what you presented that that part is in there, so I wanted to ask you about that.
It is not specifically, and what we would recommend doing from that standpoint is perhaps scaling back the focus on the market 50th percentile. So looking at the pure spectrum of taxpayer dollars, what are the resources available and potentially targeting a lower market rate?
So is that something you could give us, that information?
We can, yeah. We do like to start with the midpoint, just sort of where you're in clean cut as possible, but can certainly look at...
That was very important to all the folks on that committee, and so I would like, if that's all right with everyone for us to see.
Well, I think Wes can even put you together from the standpoint of where our tax rates compare to with these same districts.
Sure, you know, just they have more businesses and they end up with just more money overall. And you must have a way of figuring what that amount is.
That's a valid point. With a 15% turnover rate, we've got doc tax dollars here that are going out the door. We're spending on professional development, so whether they have more tax dollars or not, it's irrelevant. We got a 15% turnover rate, we gotta fix it. And part of that is fixing the overhead cost structure that's out of whack and cleaning up some of these other salary structures that are out of whack to pay the people at the building the money that we need to pay them to keep them here, to educate the kids instead of going to Liberty and Park Hill, wherever we're going to. So it's a great question, but...
It's something I'd like to know whether or not we do...
Whether they've got more tax or not or not, it's irrelevant. We got a problem, we gotta fix.
Some of those districts also work longer days too. I mean, so it's not apples to apples, and so the pay is going to be more at some of those districts because of the longer calendar year. I don't know how...
That's something that they should address.
You could differentiate that. I know when I went to Park Hill, I worked 10 more days a year, and that of course increased the salary too.
And contract days is a consideration already in the compensation study and the preliminary results reported.
With the other districts that have those particular set days too.
But you don't have that right now on this report.
It is in this report.
It is in this report.
Okay.
Let me ask, I thought I heard you say we're about $2 million off on the lower end getting them up to the... Okay, do you know what the figure is for the ones that are above the line, what it would be to bring them back down to the line?
1.2.
So that gets us a little closer.
She's advocating a freeze, so that stays there until it would wash out.
At least for some of that.
A period of time. Some of it's gotta be addressed, but that's, needs to be discussed in detail.
In other meanings, I bet there are, some of those higher ones are so far out, you'd have to freeze for quite many years. But when you look at the teachers and you look at the pairs, I am just sent by what we pay our pairs.
Well, yeah, and the fact that we've got 100-plus pairs, I mean, that tells me maybe we should hire a few more teachers and get those students' teacher ratios correct as well as the compensation correct. The pairs are highly valuable, they're great people, but we've got 100...
It depends on why we have them, because we have some pairs that work individually with children and, you know, that kind of thing.
Pairs to me would be, a lot of cases would be a quick fix, whereas the teachers are the real backbone, helping to make sure...
We don't know what, how many of them do what job though.
How much consideration, Priya, was taken into yours, experience and degree?
At this point, in terms of the teacher's degree is a focus in terms of which range they're assigned to. For now, it's relatively basic, simply bachelor's versus master's. Pairs education is much less of a focus.
Is that the same way administratively?
It is not. On that, we are looking primarily at the job requirements to some degree in terms of identifying an appropriate market match, but not necessarily recommending a specific salary range based on the education they have.
Or years of experience.
Correct.
One piece of data that would be extremely helpful from my perspective, I don't know about everybody else, but we show our total employee counts in each of these positions. I would like to see from a sample data of the competitive districts of the same size as us, I know they're not all the same size, but the ones that are close, what the counts are in each of these positions, because it's not apples, it's apples, pairs and oranges. Because some of these don't look at this going, we don't have enough staff, and I don't even know what I'm talking about, and others are, there's no way we need that many people in that role. And having those comparatives would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, that's something that we didn't request specifically as part of this study, just given the focus on compensation, but we likely do have a fair amount of the data.
Is that something that would, that would be included in this, or does that add to our scope?
Um, well, we...
If we didn't put the staffing...
Right, and what we can do is take a look at just what basic data we have available that we can add just for basic comparative purposes, and then if we need to do additional requests or data analysis of, you know...
Now, this data still needs to be cleaned up somewhat, because I just noticed this middle school principal, for instance, you've got three salaries comparable there. So that line item would definitely need to be encrypted to four minutes.
Well, it'd impact the average.
Right.
So we have high middle school principal changes here, that's one. That person was out, the person wasn't in.
This is great information. It is what we, what we need in order to...
It's from outside source.
Because it's not based on feelings or our opinion or our own biases.
We're gonna work on cleaning up some of the data right, because some of the data from the three-page report to the 22-page report didn't exactly cross over right.
Those are pieces that we need to look through really deeply, and that would be kind of the next step. We wanted to give you everything that we have at this point and then talk about direction going forward.
Okay, so we don't have, like, the extra duty jobs that we have as part of this either.
Yeah, so on the extra duty, we didn't have a huge sample, and you can kind of talk to us, that actually responded on extra duty. Some responded on what their extra duties were. They may have included them in their current job and identified that these were extra duty assignments within their current job. We didn't have a huge sample.
No, but you can get that off the salary schedule.
Yeah, and what we have to develop further.
And what we're working to do is extrapolate it where it has been included, or look to the specific responses we do have, and what it may mean is we just won't be as specific in terms of dollar-cost recommendations, but rather provide that comparison for the board to review and make decisions.
I think if we're going to look at our, all of our staff, we ought to look at that as well and leave that out.
Robert, what's the timeline on having salaries ready for next year?
April 15th.
Oh, yes.
Contracts you'd like to get out to your non-tenure teachers and probationary teachers, so...
Work will be starting on that fairly soon, I...
We're coming back here Thursday night to dig into this further, okay? And I know that there's been a lot of information at various fronts here, but you really need to, here between now and Thursday night, start digging into this. There's some decisions from the standpoint that you need to look at those lower-paid areas, obviously, but also you need to look at the higher-paid areas, because really you need to take into consideration the mileage amounts that were rolled into those salaries, okay? And this goes back to the comment we had when we talked about the mileage adjustment and policy here at last board meeting. Mileage is mileage, salary is salary. And that needs to be a decision whether or not you want to roll those back out and live with, whether you pay administrative mileage or not, then that needs to be just like the policy is, or don't pay administrative mileage. Some of this goes far beyond mileage though. I agree 100%, it should be apples to apples, but some of this goes far beyond mileage. I mean, you've got some of these positions that are overpaid by 30% to the 50th percentile mean, and the totals are 50,000 to 20,000 more than they should be, and those stipends that were rolled in were five grand or something. This is way more than...
And you want to take a look at these though, too. They're really in your coordinator areas, your facilitator areas. Some of these, I even asked myself what they are.
Just humor me, I know it's in special edit, just because it's, the number bothers me really bad. The process consultants, I mean, the pay's high and the count is high. What...
Is Denise here?
No.
The process consultants, Sadie, what, do you remember, how can you describe how those work, the process consultants?
I'm gonna do my best.
Yeah.
So the process consultants, there's some that it like, one process consultant would facilitate three different buildings, so they have their pay load, and so they serve as more or less process consultants. So they will be at IEP meetings, they handle a lot of the paperwork and kind of facilitate the IEP meetings at each of those schools.
Do they, don't they go and see the kids?
They do testing, and, yes, they do testing and oversee really the analysis of the paperwork to make sure that they get all of...
We have a lot of kids on the autism spectrum that have the IEPs, and so we need a lot of the consultants that are able to manage the numbers that we have.
The question's not what they're doing and whether it's important or not, it's obviously extremely important for the district. It's the compensation compared to the other districts that do the exact same thing.
Oh, I thought you were asking something else, sorry.
I mean, we need to understand and make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
It's like, what is a college and career specialist? To me, is that a counselor?
At the high stage of our high schools, have a college and career specialist. But that's the one you're, that's the one it's referring to. There's no names next to it, so I'm just assuming that's...
But they don't necessarily have counseling degrees.
Right.
So... And may not have teacher degrees.
And you go down through here, and that's really what has to be done, is we take a look at all these, and specifically for Thursday, Amy, do you have any directions?
Well, I think this is good to kind of be able to look in depth in this more and really develop the additional question. I'm pre- I mean, I'm not gonna be available here. Do you have availability by phone that we could...
I will be, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure there will be, yeah.
So I think developing the further questions, there are recommendations on some additional information that we need to be able to really go into this data a little bit deeper, so I think that if that discussion is just around that, we are to, one of the areas we want to look at, I know we're talking a lot about staffing as well, and we can take a look at that. There's just two things that we're looking at, compensation and staffing. I'm not saying that we don't look at both of those, we do need to do that, but I want to make sure that on the compensation piece, we're focusing on that, and as we start developing staffing funds for the children, we'll take a look at those and take notes. So we're gonna make sure we keep that focused where we need, and then we can look going forward at the staffing and each of those areas and provide additional data.
Well, to be fair, we haven't had, I mean, we haven't had this information ever.
Correct. Yeah, it's gonna take a long time.
Just to be clear though, the number that, Dennis, this is pretty important, but the number that she presented to get people to the minimum, the 1.9 million, that just gets them to the minimum. That doesn't get them anywhere close to the 50th percentile comparison to those other districts. If you look at the data, for example, like on the first one, I mean, the range minimum was 45,000 or something, and the range midpoint, to compare it on the average of the district, is 58,000. So I mean, there's, I mean, to get people to the midpoint where we're comparing years of service properly and those type of things, I mean, I think we're staring at a different number.
And that is a good point. Again, yeah, the costs are just to bring employees to minimum. We do need to go through the reevaluation process, make sure market matches are correct and the like, but ultimately, we'll be recommending that below minimum adjustment value, and then typically looking at some experience-based or equity-based adjustment on top of that that would account for experience in the job or time in the job to help employees move through the range, so that when you do have an employee that's satisfactory in their performance, that has been in the job for some time, that the 50th percentile is truly the target or whatever market benchmark is ultimately selected.
It doesn't do us any good to make some adjustments, and our turnover rate goes from 15 to 12. We've still got a big problem, so we gotta fix it. Just a point, you got the same thing on the high side too. I mean, if it was just to get back to the maximum on the overpays, not to something that made sense in the 75% or something. Just keep that in mind, we're talking about 1.9 and 1.2, those really aren't the numbers to clean up the problem. It's probably double on one side and maybe 50% more on the high side.
But you do need to take a look at the benefit side and the work schedule and the number of days reported.
Yeah, we'll confirm that that is accurately accounted for, the contract days should be reflected, and then again, speaking in terms of extra pay and some of the quantitative analysis... analysis behind the benefits cost.
I don't want people to get my comments wrong, I'm all about saving money and efficiency and those kinds of things, but we shouldn't be saving money on the backs of teachers and other people who are undercompensated. So let's clean up the stuff we need to clean up and take care of the biggest asset, which is the people that are teaching the kids.
Right, the idea is to fix it, not just cut.
And that's where, what page is that, the actual salary structure?
The teacher?
Yeah, the teacher.
Page 10.
And that is just reflected right now on a very broad base of the bachelor's, masters, and it doesn't take into consideration of any in-between.
Right. Oh, with...
And that will be broadened, and you have data showing that, right?
We do.
I think that would be a good piece to have Thursday night.
The educational support piece down here, is that what you're looking at, is pairs?
Look at what we pay pairs.
No, I know, it's crazy.
$16,000.
I'm surprised we didn't have that.
God. Are those possible part-time?
No.
It's just, it's horrendous. It is.
But it's, it's good to finally have, correct that in our hands where we can make decisions that we need to make to...
We still need to ensure accuracy.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because, like you were saying, Eric, that process consultant seems oddly high, so...
Will you be available by phone then Thursday?
That's my goal, yeah. I've got some travel conflicts, but I'm trying to rearrange flights and...
We're looking to have that and get it 4:30 Thursday. Any other questions in for...
Give us something to look at for the next three days, absolutely.
Well, we begin...
That'd be good.
We have some kind of like packet, something different than this for Thursday, or is this what we'll have?
This is, this is what you'll have. This is where we'll start. We can build from there.
Yes, well, you did say there would be more to come.
There will absolutely be building from there, yeah, in terms of timing.
I didn't know if there would be any different by Thursday, so...
I'll give you my notes.
I love your notes. You're a very thorough guy.
Can I ask a question? You have, I'm starting on page 11, you have these kind of jobs broken up into different little groups, and the minimum through the midpoint and the maximum. How did you determine which jobs were going to fall within those confines of those groups?
It's really based on the J Qs and how we identify the jobs, and then in terms of the actual range development, looking at the market data corresponding to those positions. And that's, again, where we would look at for classification feedback as well, if there's concerns about the way a job has been assigned to a given schedule in addition to just the range.
Okay, and then when you've got the averages, especially when I look at the teachers, we have them all on different steps. How does that factor in? Because you have an average, starting on the first page, you've got that annualized average base, and then also you have it somewhere else where it just talks about the average. Are we going to see, like, a breakdown of how many of these are, you know, first year to five-year, you know, five-year to 10-year? Are we going to have any sort of analysis that way on the breakdown of how many we have in each one of those groups?
Yeah, we can certainly get there ultimately, and there is and will be an employee-by-employee analysis that will actually place each teacher on a step, for example, so it will be very discreet. But we could certainly do some roll-up summaries as well to clarify where employees are falling relative to what their step or what the average, if we give a number of steps.
And then we'll have that compared to the different districts.
Yeah, that's very helpful information, and those are good.
Yeah, well, it's, it's very different if you're...
If you have lots of new people, that'll make you, or if you have lots of very experienced people.
We've got a lot of new ones, it's going to be, I'm hired, he's on the chair of staff.
It helps to figure out why someone's paid, but they're paid if you know that they're here.
Some of the other districts would have the same, wouldn't they?
Right, so it's helpful to see it.
Agree, we do think you can be on call then Thursday. Okay.
Thank you very much. Is this information presented at the board meeting?
We have no decisions.
But this is posted online.
It's posted on the work session online.
On the work session?
Yeah, so they go to the work session minutes, it's right there. It is now, it wasn't earlier, it is now.
It was, it was at the start of the...
Will it go on the school district?
Yes.
WIPS?
Yes.
I mean, we kept so that they could read that. Okay, because I don't think people necessarily know to go to the work session.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
Especially community members.
We'll put her out there where you everybody can... No, you'll take care of it.
Hosea update. Chris, Solon?
Hosea update, did you have Nancy in?
I'm trying to take a look at the security and safety for that back playground area at Hosea, and Chris has some very preliminary figures here.
Okay, so I've talked with Dr. Newhart, we've looked at putting in a perimeter fence. We would take out the existing fence that's there on the alley, now it's on the four-foot fence.
Whatever.
And we would take the fence clear around, tie it into the building. Now, the numbers that we got from our contractor reflects a six-foot fence. Dr. Newhart has asked about taking that to an eight-foot fence, so we're getting those numbers, but to put in about 600 linear feet of black vinyl chain link fence, which is what we've been doing lately, we've been doing it for several years, so almost $18,000 with three gates in there. We've also looked at putting more light on the playground. There's two lights now, one of them was not working, and we're looking at adding two more dusted-on lights, so the playground would have four lights to give good coverage to that area. I know I T. is looking at addition, or I think upgrading the cameras that are there, right?
Yeah.
Are they going digital, or?
Just outdated and then adding, I believe, eight more cameras per Kevin, so that's all.
Oh.
So we'll take it from 16 now to 24 cameras, so we've got to add an additional D V O's for that. We're waiting to get bids back.
We've only got one bid on the fence?
This is just a... We haven't, we haven't opened it up for bids at all yet.
We're, yeah, so we know what preliminary estimate would be.
Yeah, I think it's important we eliminate the hangout spot, that's a major problem.
Solon, we have it, what's the update on police patrol?
On the, oh, I've asked the police to add more patrol in that back alleyway that goes right behind the school. So I've asked that through our, head of our resource officers to make that request.
I was down there about a week ago, and I shoot about 12 kids out of the playground. None of them are Hosea students.
I think the only way to do this is to fence it off.
And then I went back, let's see, Saturday, and I did see a patrol car come by. I was there Friday night at 9:30 after my dance, I went down there. There was a few kids there, and I, you know, when he first said putting the fence around Hosea, I thought he was crazy. Like, that's the biggest area, but what he's doing is the right thing. I called, I called with Dr. Newhart, and I think the community and the parents, there's a lot of kids coming there to hang out, and they're not, they're not from that area. They're older kids, some of them, most of them, and I think the idea of putting a few more cameras, the lights, the fence, is a great idea that we could do if we can squeeze out some money to do that. I think it'd be really good. It's a good thing for the Hosea area. I'll be down here again Friday night.
The lights and the cameras are, I mean, we're getting that done as we speak, okay? Just with the K C P L, what our current setup we got. We want to check a little bit further into this fencing, so we'll probably look to seek bids on that.
Well, the problem, too, is Hosea's like back off of Key Hill where it's like a cubby hole, and it's just a perfect place for...
It is a cubby hole.
You don't drive back there unless you're going back.
That's why you have to be, it is a destination, it's not a drive-by at all.
It's just a place to hang out. I think, I think that Hosea and Hyde Park are the two spots where those kids, a lot of kids go and congregate, and unfortunately, some of them have bad ideas.
Well, if this has been a place that we know things have happened, then it's our responsibility to try to keep that.
It's our property, we've got to do something about it.
Keep that from being a spot where that happens all the time, so...
Now, with this going into winter?
Pardon me?
This going into winter, is this going to affect timeline, or how fast can we get it done?
I think we probably still get it done, I believe so, but I don't know that we would get this, and we might not really get a bid back, I don't think, until December.
So, it just depends on the...
It'd be difficult to get more to you on the night, so by time...
It just takes some time to get proposals.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn to regular board meeting, take a 45-minute break.
Can we do executive session on our break, maybe?
I'll second, I mean, adjourn to the regular board meeting after four.
Mr. Snezen?
Yes.
Mrs. Danberg?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Mrs. Marges?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruce?